Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Temple ISD Board of Trustees held here on October 14th, 2025, beginning at 6:00 PM. Our first item is to call us to order. We do have a quorum. Second item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand up and face the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the big Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Item three is public comments on agenda items. Monica, has anybody signed up tonight? Okay, thank you. Item four is superintendent recognition. Members, will we come? Please stand in front of the dais. Our first item is the recognition of Senator Pete Flores.
The eighty-ninth legislative session has been a busy one for our elected officials in Texas, and it has also been an impactful one for public education. Temple ISD is grateful for the work our central Texas legislators have put in the regular session and two special sessions. Tonight, we welcome Pete Flores, District 24 State Senator. Senator Flores was a strong supporter of House Bill 2, which provided additional funding for public education during the regular session, and he even shared a Temple ISD video explaining funding issues with members of the Senate Republican Caucus. He has also supported legislation addressing accountability and assessment reform during the second special session, among many other important pieces of education-related legislation. Senator Flores has demonstrated responsiveness and a tireless work ethic in his approach as our senator. He stays in continuous contact with board members, administration, and he even attends school-related events to support our students and our staff. We think, we thank Senator Flores for his work in the legislature, and we thank and recognize him for his efforts on behalf of public education. The inscription on the plaque being presented reads, "Temple ISD recognizes Senator Pete Flores for his commitment to public education during the eighty-ninth legislative session. We are grateful for your service and dedication in support of the children and educators of Temple ISD. Your partnership matters, and it makes a difference in our school system and our community. Thank you again, Senator Flores, for your partnership and support. We appreciate you."
Well, first of all, thank you all very much for this great honor. Thank you very much. I think the ones who deserve this is, are you all. I mean, here we are, you're on your off time, and, or you work for the district, and you're here tonight. That says a lot. It speaks volumes. And that's what it takes, is all of us working together to continue to provide the best education in, in the state and in Texas and the nation as the best we can. And the more we work together, the better we're able to do that, and the more I can advocate for you. You have a great, a great superintendent. You have a great board. This is a great community, and what an honor and privilege it is of mine to serve you in the Texas Senate. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll say something while you're heading off or here, or pictures, whatever. Two things I'll say, of course, most of you know that Senate districts are far larger than House districts. And Senator Flores has the same responsiveness to us as our House members, and I really appreciate that because I know that's not easy. You know, Dr. Adams shared that he shared the video, the House Bill 2 video, that really explained that the initial amount wasn't enough to cover a lot of different things. I texted him that video. I did not ask him to share it. That's the other part of this. He did that on his own. I got wind through the back channels that he did that. And so I really appreciate you advocating, even when you're not asked to. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next item is ESC Region 12 School Board of the Year recognition.
We are thrilled to have representatives from the Education Service Center Region 12 on hand tonight to honor our Temple ISD Board of Trustees. And so at this time, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Dr. Kenny Berry, Executive Director at ESC Region 12 for a special presentation.
Well, thank you all for having us this evening. We are here for a very special recognition, but before we get to that, I want to just make a couple of introductions. As mentioned, my name is Kenny Berry. I have the pleasure of serving as the Executive Director at ESC Region 12. With me today, I have Tammy Becker, our Deputy Executive Director over Academic Services, Tom Norris, former Executive Director, and also field service agent for Temple ISD, and then a couple of our communication team members, Abby and Taryn, who are going to catch, capture a few photos and videos of this special occasion. Tonight, we celebrate a school board whose excellence has been recognized not just in our region, but across our entire state. It is my honor to recognize the Region 12 School Board of the Year and a state finalist for Texas School Board of the Year, Temple ISD Board of Trustees. I do want to just mention a few highlights from their State Board of the Year application. Some things that I'll tell you, as you read through that application, it becomes apparent that the TISD Board is a model of effective governance. Recognized as one of the most diverse boards in the state of Texas, they operate as a true, as a true team of eight, with their superintendent fostering a collaborative environment built on trust and respect. Their leadership has earned incredible community confidence, reflected by nearly a decade without a single contested trustee election. This unity has produced extraordinary results for their students. The board successfully passed the largest bond in the district's history, over $164 million to build new facilities for the future. They have championed innovative programs like the First Elementary Fine Arts Academy in central Texas and a K-12 International Baccalaureate Program, helping students achieve unprecedented success with over 175 state and national qualifiers in fine arts and athletics. For their collaborative governance and their relentless pursuit of excellence, please join me in congratulating the Temple ISD Board of Trustees.
And I'll just say what judges have said as well. Come on up here, Tammy. And by the way, if you didn't know, Tammy and Tom Norris both worked for Temple ISD at one time. So congratulations on that. Welcome back anytime. Sorry, Kenny. I will say, I mean, when you work with, when you work with people long enough, they're not just colleagues or friends. And this group here, they're, we're friends. We're not just colleagues. We're friends. We have shared so much together, and I, and I talk to so many superintendents. And when I have those conversations, I, it's a reality check because I realize how fortunate we are as a school district. This relationship, good or bad, trickles down. It does. And you know it, principals. And, and it, in our case, it's good. It's better than good. But I have this reality check every time I have these conversations on how fortunate we are in Temple ISD. I think the, the best part of this board, I mean, there's a lot of them, but in my mind, the, if I were to pick one, every single one of them has one motivation. And that is for all students, not just fine arts, not just this group, not just elementary, not just where my kids go, not, no, it's all students and all staff to be in the best positions to be successful. That is absolutely their motivation individually and therefore collectively. So I am, I'm certainly, we are certainly grateful for each of you. You know, winning it at the regional level, being a top five of the state. And you know, it's like I told the board, sometimes they get it wrong, and they did at the state level. But it did save us money. We didn't have to buy them state championship rings, so it saved us a little bit of money. But truly grateful for each of you, and we hope that you enjoy your service as much as we enjoy you serving us. So we really appreciate each of you. Thank you.
Item C is TISD student artwork at Tessa Tasby Convention.
All right, we are pleased to announce that two of our Temple ISD students had artwork selected for display at the Tessa Tasby State Convention in Houston earlier this year. Valerie Velasquez, Valerie, we bring, come on up. She had her mixed media project titled Political Strife. So she was selected, and she's the representative from Temple High School. Go ahead, up. And Amory Pickens, is she here? No, okay. She also had a mixed media project titled Funny Gremlin, and she represented Western Hills Elementary School. Only a limited number of pieces of artwork represented in school districts from across the state of Texas were selected for display at the convention. Thousands of school board members and district administrators and leaders had a chance to see their artwork. Over the three days, Amory wasn't able to be here. The elementary student wasn't able to be here. We do have our artwork. Would you like, would you like your teacher to bring it up? Okay, come on ahead. Go ahead, bring it up. Thank you, Ms. Foster. This is the second consecutive year that Temple ISD students have had their artwork selected for display at the Tessa Tasby State Convention. And we'd also like to recognize Ms. Rhonda Ramirez. There's our Temple High School art teacher, and Ms. Megan Foster, our art teacher at Western Hills, to stand so we can recognize them. Thank you, Rhonda. And Valerie, on behalf of Temple ISD, congratulations on this extraordinary accomplishment. We are so very proud of you. Congratulations.
We have a picture right here. The best photographer. Good job, buddy.
That is such beautiful artwork, especially we saw it down in Houston. I mean, that's a great honor. Val, right there. That is a great honor to be displayed among all the school districts in Texas. We have tremendous talent here in Temple ISD, and we have great educators who bring out that talent. Thank you all for everything y'all do for the fine arts here in Temple. This is proof, proof that we have outstanding students and outstanding artwork. Our next item is TMEA Administrator of the Year, Michael Hobbs.
The Tex, oh, you're already getting clapped. The Texas Music Educators Association, or TMEA, recognizes upper-level administrators across the state who have been instrumental in preserving quality music education programs on their dis, on their campuses and in their districts with the Distinguished Administrator Award. Bonham Middle School Principal Michael Hobbs has been awarded the Distinguished Administrator Award by TMEA for his work with Bonham's music education program. He was nominated for this honor by both the campus and district fine art staff, and here's a portion of what was written about you, Michael, Mr. Hobbs. Mr. Hobbs is a passionate advocate for the music and arts program at his campus and throughout the district. He has consistently dedicated his time, both during and after-school hours, to attend every performance, competition, and award ceremony involving the music students of Bonham Middle School. His strong, visible presence on campus and at music events across the region send a clear message to teachers and students alike. Their work is valued, and they have his full support. And so tonight, we join the Fine Arts Department and the Texas Music Educators Association in recognition of Mr. Hobbs. Thank you for all you do for music education and fine arts at Bonham Middle School and Temple ISD. Congratulations.
I just want to say, on behalf of the board, how proud we are of Mr. Hobbs. He's an excellent administrator at Bonham. Again, this goes to our fine arts. I mean, he's not a fine arts instructor, but he helps promote and assist fine arts. This is why we're such a strong district. Folks like Mr. Hobbs and others here. I mean, thank you so much for everything you do. Would you like to say a few words?
Oh, you know, I'm a, oh, sure. Thank my wife and kids. They, I give up, you know, they, my wife does a lot so that I can attend this thing, so the applause goes to her, but also I do want to tell you that it's really important that we educate the entire child. And so not just in math and in English classes, while those are very important. Our students, ninety-nine percent of them will tell you, they come to school because they want to be in the band, or they want to do football. That, so it's really important that we support them in those things that they think are important or that are important to them, and our teachers work so hard. And so the least we could do is go and support them. And I also want to thank my APs and my counselors because the only way I'm able to go do that stuff is because they can run the campus while I'm gone. And so we have very capable administrative staff that can do that, and so thank you all for that.
Come on up. We want Nathan to get up there. That's right. Come on, Parker and Nathan, the stars of the show. Hi, friend. You gonna go up there and take a picture with dad?
Well, thank you for sharing him with us.
That's right. So cute. So precious. Great job, guys.
Next item was Principal Appreciation Month recognition.
All right, so Temple ISD is blessed with fifteen amazing leaders that serve as principals for each campus in the district, and the month of October gives us the opportunity to recognize those campus leaders during National Principals Month. And so this year, the theme for those principals in Temple ISD is Leading for Impact, and that's exactly what they do every single day. I'm going to ask you principals to come on up and begin to shake hands while I read through this. Each of these campus leaders impacts their staff, their students, and their families with their actions. The principals serve each of those groups in a variety of roles, but no matter which role they play, our principals carry the heaviest load when it comes to building culture and sustaining campus morale. Principals are also the person that our students, our staff, and our families depend on as to carry them through the good times and the bad. As you can see, the board loves our principals, and our principals love the board. All right, can I get you guys to make a little circle in front of them? Come on this way. Make a circle in front. Dr. Currie, you'll make a circle right in front of them. Yep, that's perfect. Right there. That's great. Just right in front. You're doing a good job, Amanda. Y'all just make a circle in front of them, please. Good job. Y'all come on over. Come over in front of them, please. They don't follow directions very well. It's like corralling cats. Man, I lost control of the principals a long time ago. Okay, I'm going to finish my speech now. Our principals carry a lot of burdens throughout the year, and while you never hear them complain about that fact, we would like to do something to help lighten that load as we honor them during Principals Month. So tonight, our senior leadership team has, will be presenting each of our fifteen principals. If you guys will grab it, it's from behind, with a backpack marked with an embroidered Temple ISD logo, so that will help you as you carry your campus and your folks throughout the day. We want to thank you all, just go ahead. Yep. There you go. We want to thank you all for serving our campuses with intention and passion and leading them for impact. Your dedication and commitment to your profession and to this district, and most importantly, to our staff, to our families, and to our children, is extraordinary. And so on behalf of Temple ISD, we again say thank you, principals. Can y'all scooch in a little bit, friends? Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
I'll ju, I'll just make a few comments. You know, we are, Lisa and senior leadership team, we talk about it all the time. We are so proud of our principals. This is a group of folks, some days they're just holding it together, and other days they're charging ahead. And, you know, they're, they're spending a lot of time oscillating between its decisions. It's how do you balance morale and push? It's all of that. It makes it very difficult. They're the closest to the neighborhood. They're the closest to families, closest to their teachers, kiddos. Their impact is far and wide. I'm going to borrow something that one of the board members, I'll just say who it is. Ronnie said to me earlier today when we were on the phone, and, and he's right. There's a difference between influence and impact. And our principals, they deliver impact. They truly change lives and make a difference. They don't just sway. I mean, they don't just get people to, I mean, they truly make a difference. We're grateful. I'm telling you, I've worked in districts where, and I've said this to Lisa and others before, you can have the best central office in the world, but if you have average or below-average cadre of principals, your district will circle the drain. Your district will suffer. You'll lose teachers. You'll lose families. But if you have incredible principals, even if you had a, and we have a great central office, so I'm not talking about us, even if you had an average, because they're looking at me like, what are you talking? Even if you had an average central office, you would do just fine. That is the value of a principal, and it's the truth. We have fifteen extraordinary men and women that lead at the campus level. We're grateful for each of you. We truly are. Thank you for your leadership, your commitment. Those that have spouses and family members here, I've said this to Hobbs earlier, but thank you for sharing them. Because even though they're at home, I know sometimes they're not at home. They're on the phone. Jill, right? We were on the phone the other night pretty late. Lisa's on the phone with y'all. I mean, it, it happens. It's part of the job. So I really appreciate your support systems for being here because it is a team. It really is. And it's for many, many times, it's for children that are not your own, right? But they are, right? They're on our campuses. They are our children. So thank you so much. Appreciate our principals.
Our next item is Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting.
The Temple Independent School District Finance Department has been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFPA, of the United States and Canada for the sixth consecutive year, until asked the finance department if they want to come and join the board on the dais. An annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024, was submitted by Temple ISD and subsequently reviewed by an impartial panel representing the 21,000-member association. Entries are examined for a spirit of transparency and full disclosure and are held to the high standard of the association as determined by a forty-five-page checklist of requirements. Temple ISD's report was deemed by the association to clearly communicate the district's financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. According to the GFPA, the certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by the district and its management. Submitting the annual comprehensive financial report is a team effort, and it takes a tremendous amount of work for the entire Temple ISD Finance Department. We would like to congratulate the department for not only your hard work in earning this recognition against this year, but for all you do for Temple ISD and its taxpayers. Congratulations.
I just want to say, not to get away this quick. Thank you all for everything y'all do. You know, besides putting this report together. I know it is a team effort. It's a lot of work. But what y'all really do is, we couldn't accomplish our goals of educating our kids if it wasn't for y'all. Y'all make that truly happen. And also, you give confidence to the constituents, our taxpayers out there, that we are manage, managing our funds wisely and making great decisions on that. Y'all help make that happen. So thank you all so much. Y'all truly do a great job. And we are the board, and I speak for Dr. Ott and everybody. We are so proud of y'all, and thank you all again so much.
So it's definitely a team that puts this together every year. Each one of these ladies, they know all of the compliance standards inside and out. Sounds like a really boring job, but these people really put their heart and soul into each part of it, and they give us confidence. Like President Posey said, when a taxpayer calls and wants to ask questions, I can be confident in how I guide them and lead them and tell them exactly where to find the information to back it up. And it's only because of all the time and the dedication that this team gives to our students. So thank you all.
Our next item is Executive Hires, A Consideration for Recommendation of Director of Student Services.
So I'm here to make the recommendation for Mr. Mike, Ike Hernandez. And so Ike Hernandez has been selected as a lone finalist for the position of the Director of Student Services. Mr. Hernandez is a 1988 Temple High School alum who graduated. Mr. Hernandez is a nineteen eighty-eight Temple High School alum who graduated with a BA in Psychology and an MA in Psychology and Counseling from the University of Mary Harden, Baylor. He has been in education for twenty-seven years with twenty-three of those years as a campus administrator for several districts throughout Central Texas. Since 2019, Mr. Hernandez has been serving as the Assistant Principal at the Temple High School. Mr. Hernandez is engaged to Amy Avila, who is a professor at Temple College. He has two brothers, a sister, and his father, who all live in Temple. In his free time, he enjoys anything music and movie-related. He also loves going to concerts and is a huge sports fan. Mr. Hernandez is dedicated to serving the students, parents, and staff in Temple ISD, as well as the Temple community. He says that being a product of Temple ISD, this district holds a special place in his heart, and he looks forward to the opportunity to serve in his new role. It is with great pleasure that we recommend Mr. Hernandez to the TISD Board of Trustees for the position of Director of Student Services on October fourteenth, 2025.
Thank you, Michelle Lopez. Is there any questions?
Moving for approval.
I recognize Ms. Suarez for a motion. Motion by Ms. Suarez.
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, the same sign, the ayes have it. Congratulations, Ike.
So I had something written down, but I think I'm just gonna speak from my heart. I just wanted to thank you first off for trusting me with this position. I promise to work hard every day for kids, staff members, parents, community members, but most of all, to do what's best for kids, always. As Mr. Lopez was saying, I am a product of Temple ISD. I was a cater cougar, a bottom bulldog, and a Temple wildcat. Also, I was born and raised in Temple, and those two things are very dear to me. And so I'm just, once again, wanna just thank you so much for giving me this opportunity and just trusting me. I'm excited and ready to, for this position and to, to help all, all kids and parents, staff, anybody in the district. I'm just excited for that. I wanna thank a couple of people, if that's okay. I wanna thank, I do wanna thank my, Temple High School, my Temple High School family that are here and that I've worked with for six years. It's the most amazing place I've ever worked at, without a doubt. It's the six best years of my educational career, without a doubt. Thank you, Dr. Mail, for being a good mentor, and for my AP family that have become like brothers and sisters to me. I'm gonna miss that part, without a doubt. I'm gonna miss that place, but I am excited for this opportunity. So I wanna thank them. I wanna thank my family that is here today, and just my whole family in general that have always supported me and believed in me, and my father. That's it. I couldn't say it, I'm sorry. I lost my mom about a year ago. My dad has always instilled education and hard work, and I would not be here today without him and my mom. So anyway, sorry about that, I didn't expect that. My mom was very dear to me, so, and my family. So thank all y'all here today, my family, my soon-to-be-wife, Amy, she's an educator. My sister is the glue of our family. Of course, my father, my cousin Jessica. My niece, Kat. And my little brother, Eddie. Thank y'all. I apologize, it just was. We celebrated my mom Friday, and we celebrated my dad's birthday. He had two sold-out shows in San Antonio. It was, it was amazing, and it was a great way to celebrate my mom, so thank y'all very much.
All right, item seven is the Board President's Report, A Resolution to Cast Votes in Bell County Appraisal District Board of Director Selection. Yeah.
Okay, so this is, every entity has a certain number of votes. They changed the rules on this, I think it was three or four years ago. Every entity has a certain number of votes, based on your taxing entity. For us in Temple ISD, we have two-hundred-and-forty-five total votes. We've done some checking. We believe supporting the incumbents in this case is a good thing. We've divided them up. They're in the resolution there, one-hundred-and-twenty-three of the votes to Sam Foulter and one-hundred-and-twenty-two to Todd Scott. And so we'd like to recommend this to the board for approval. And then this, this allows us to continue to move forward in the process for, for them to return to the appraisal district and serve.
Members, any questions? This does require approval.
I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Motion by Ms. Gallin. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Item B is Future Items Discussion. Any items you wish, y'all wish to discuss at a future meeting? Okay. Item C is Important Dates, and Dr. Ott.
Okay, I just have a few here to go over. This Friday, obviously, is homecoming, and our pep rally's at two forty-five, Temple High School, if you're able to make it. And we also have Dyslexia Night at five PM here in the Administration Building. The following Saturday, October twenty-fifth, we have EB Con, and that is a fantastic event. If you haven't been before, where's Connie? I saw you there, you are, right in the middle, of course, right? It's really an awesome event for our families. If you have the chance to come by Saturday, I highly encourage you to do so. It starts at nine o'clock. How long does it go? Till eleven-thirty? Thank you, Connie. Nine to eleven-thirty, but it's for our emergent bilingual families, and it's truly a fantastic event. October twenty-eighth, and actually, the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, we have Tales in Treats. Tales in Treats for PK through second grade is a five-thirty Administration Building on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth grades, three through five. Board Policy Committee is that evening, so, and that actually starts, it says here, at four-thirty. So hey, when our policy committee's over, we can join Tales in Treats if you'd like, Board. And then October thirtieth is our Board Facilities Committee at four-thirty here in the Admin Building. And November fifth, some of you have attended some of these before, whether it's in the Santa Fe Plaza, or Kennedy Powell, or Thornton even. But we have a STEM Night at Kennedy Powell at five-thirty PM, November fifth, and that is also the day after the election. You have two other important date documents, and those are all the fine arts activities, whether it's choir, you know, visual arts, band, you name it. And that takes you all the way through the beginning of November. There's plenty of opportunities to watch our kids perform. It's always a lot of fun, and, and another byproduct of that is having the opportunity to mingle with parents and talk with families and find out what's on their mind and how they're doing as well. So I encourage you to try to attend some of those events. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dr. Ott. Item seven is Consent Items. On these items, item D, Bree and myself can have abstained from it. So what is the pleasure of the board to deal with items A through C one, E through F four?
I make a recommendation that we view items seven A to E four and E four to F four altogether.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Just to clarify, that's A through C one, E through F four, okay? And the motion by Mr. Gaines.
And that's the one I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Gallin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. The items pass. Thank you. Item D, Memorandum Understanding Between Temple Independent School District and Baylor Scott &amp; White Health. Motion by Ms. Suarez.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Myers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. The items pass. Please note that Dan Posey and Bralja Alexander abstained from the vote. Thank you. Item eight, Action Items, A Human Resources, One Staffing Presentation. Mr. Lopez, welcome back.
And just wanted to just clarify, Dr. Ward's not here, so I'm filling in for her for this afternoon, so thank you for having me. So I'm gonna go over just a couple of the staffing updates for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and here we go. And so the couple of topics that we're gonna talk about is leveling classes, position ads, and then certification academy for Temple teachers, which is our CAP program. And so as we are looking at staffing numbers, one of the things that we do consider are the birth rates by year, and these are for the residents of Temple. And so as you look here, the first line is the twenty-twenty birth rates, and so there's one-thousand-three-hundred-sixty-four births during that particular year, and so those students potentially should be attending kindergarten in twenty-twenty-five. Now, not all the students are going to attend. They may have other routes, or they may move out of the Temple city limits or the Temple School District. But as you go down through that particular table right there, you can see down to, looking at the twenty-twenty-five birth rates, that would then result in those students attending school in the twenty-thirty school year. And so this information is brought from the Center for Health Statistics and Vital Events data. And so, so as you can see, there's been a couple of years where there is a decline, but for most part, it has been a steady increase from year to year.
Well, and I think, and if I may, Mr. Lopez, the COVID, like, you know, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, those birth rates, and even eighteen, were pretty low compared to what the county's seen before. And that is why there was a dip across many ISCs in terms of enrollment. It wasn't necessarily the high schools. You were looking at it was the elementary schools, in particular, in the early grades, as time went on. But the good news is, you can see here, the birth rates have gone up with the, now the twenty-twenty-five, that only includes, what, half the year? Yes, right, so that's, I put a line through that, because that doesn't even, that's not normative, I mean, that doesn't compare with the rest of them. It's apples, oranges. But the good news is, you see that picking back up, right? It's all, every year, every subsequent year after, I'd say twenty, I think it was twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, that I have my office, it continues to go up. And that's consistent with demographic trends. So that's the good news that school districts have in the area. So in some cases, we've been fortunate, I will tell you, because we had two grade levels, and this is where I'm looking at the leadership team to make sure I'm accurate. We had two cohorts, two grade levels, back-to-back that were lower than normal. And then past that, it, it went back up. So for us, the line bended temporarily and then went back up. But I'll tell you, that's not the case for many school districts. For many school districts, they have seen the line go down, bend downward from that year all the way through. So for three or four years in a row, they've seen, so what I'm, basically what I'm saying is in grades three, two, one, kinder and pre-K, they see a drop. Whereas for us, we don't see a drop in, say, K or pre-K. I think our, our back-to-back cohorts are now, what, in second, third right now, or first and second? Which one? Second, third? Yeah, second, third. So we saw a little bend, right, based on this, and then it's gone back up. But that hasn't been the case across many other school districts. That has continued to go down, or maybe even flatten out. So I think that's a very positive thing for the school district. That is correct, right. This is Bell County, if I'm not mistaken, yeah, it's Bell County birth rates, it's not TISD birth rates, so.
Okay, and so, so what do we do as far as working with this particular group and the differences from year to year? We've been working on leveling classes, and so we staff appropriately to meet student needs and fiscal responsibility. And so in July and August, we monitor the student enrollment on campuses to determine potential teacher adds or moves. And in September, typically after the Labor Day weekend, we begin to level those classes. We coordinate with Student Services to determine impact on compliance of transfers. And so then, as, you know, we're looking at our pre-K group, as you can see here in our gen ed population, we had a decrease of thirty-eight students. And so what that resulted in is we had an extra teacher over there, essentially, we needed to move a teacher. And so we were able to do that by moving one teacher over to Kennedy Powell. We are also working at, trying to keep our student-staff ratios back to the norm, not to, you know, last year, working with the budget and trying to increase the student ratios. And so here we are now, prior to the change was eleven to one, and now we're sitting at nineteen to one after that change.
So two years ago, we, as part of not having a large deficit, we increased ratios by one student all the way up and down, and that was due to the state not funding, not giving any money two sessions ago to public education. So that was one of the strategies that we used. Obviously, we received some money this last session, so we've put that back, or we've gone back to the ratios that we had before, which is good. And then the other thing I would note is, when you only have to move very few teachers after your students come in to level classes, a lot of that goes to the credit of forecasting and projecting the enrollment the way that our staff has, and I have nothing to do with that. Mr. Hoggleberg has a ton to do with that, but so do others on the leadership team as well. So to the point that you can predict that pretty close, that's less movement. Less waivers, if you have to do waivers, but we have moved teachers, that's what we do. We, we move teachers if we have to to level classes. And at least in my time here, the only time we've really done waivers, and correct me if I'm wrong, is when a teacher says, no, I want the extra student. So, you know, if the ratio is one to twenty-two, and say there's one that moves in, and that put into twenty-three, if teacher's like, no, 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 I want the student in the class, then, you know, that, for us, we just file a waiver for that, but.
And so as we move on to the kindergarten, there were a couple of moves here. However, this was actually, as you look at this, you can see that happened at Kennedy Powell, Sampson Howard, and Jefferson. And you can see the, the numbers from twenty-four, twenty-five to the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and the increases that are there, and the differences, a total of sixty-two students. And so those staffing moves, moves within, again, Kennedy Powell receiving that one teacher from Meredith. Sampson actually was able to move a teacher from third grade down to kindergarten. And then Jefferson received a teacher from Ray Allen, second grade, to move over to the kindergarten teacher, or kindergarten position, I'm sorry. And so here, again, you can see the, prior to the change, the ratios were at twenty-eight to one, as Dr. Ott alluded to. And then after the change, we're down to the twenty-three to one now. And so at the secondary campuses, the good thing is, there was no leveling required there. And so then the position ads, which is based on staffing guidelines and then based on the needs, and then, so we can see in the next slide here, that these position ads, the staffing decisions are based on those staffing guidelines, that kindergarten through fourth grade, twenty-two to one, fifth through twelfth, there's no limit, however, we're trying to stick fifth through eighth, twenty-four to one, and ninth through twelfth, at a twenty-five to one ratio. And then our functional academics and past classes are at a five to one ratio. Our functional skills, which is a more needier group there, we are at the four to one, and then our resource classes are at fifteen to one. And so then the second part to making those decisions are the needs of the students. And so if we have situations where we have high behaviors, then we need to increase that and make it a one-to-one support for that individual, then we will do that for that student. student. And so looking at the position adds, we also have the functional academics classes at Lamar. We did open up one new FA class. So with that was one teacher and then two aides that comes along with that particular group. At Bonham Middle School, we did add one co-teacher as well as at the high school. And then at the Travis, we were able to add a third assistant principal, again, all based on the needs for the campuses. And so again, here at Lamar, as you alluded to a second ago, trying to restore the ratios that we had prior to the budget situation. And so at Lamar, we did add one position for that. At Travis, we were adding two positions, one Eilar, one math. And then to high school, we were able to add four positions. And so this brought our ratios from 26 to 1 back down to the 24 to 1 ratio. Are there any questions regarding this first part of the staffing?
Members, any questions? Okay.
Okay. And so then the second piece of the presentation is the, to go over the CAT program. And so with this particular group, this is a group that I work a lot closer with. And here, as you can see on that first chart at the top, the cohort one, we added six of our candidates that were aides that moved into the teacher positions. As we got into the second year, the 24-25, that's the cohort two, and we added nine aides into those teaching positions. And then for the cohort three, which is the current year, 25-26, we added three more into those teaching positions. And so cumulatively, you can see how the numbers have changed. However, I did want to point out, for the 24-25, that we did have two of those candidates that dropped out of the program for one reason or another. And so cumulatively, that does add up to 16 total in the program as we speak. We also are at the time where that first cohort has begun to graduate from the ACE program and they're earning their bachelor's degree. And so we have five students that have currently graduated from cohort one. And then I learned today, actually, that I've got two from that second cohort that are graduating or are about to graduate. So I'm happy about that particular group. And then that leads to I Teach. And so of those five that graduated from that first cohort, they're already in the I Teach program. And the other two in that cohort two have, again, reached out today to see what do I need to do to get into the I Teach? So they're ready to begin that process. So the assignments here, you can see we have five at the pre-K level, nine at the elementary level, and then two at the secondary. Actually had one transfer from elementary up to high school. So that makes two at the secondary. And as we look here at the funding for this, as we mentioned last year, this is a budget-neutral program. So currently, as a new teacher hired this year, their salary would be at 54,096 as a certified teacher. With our CAT teachers, we are paying them at 45,777, which leaves 83,19 per year per teacher. And as you see below, the ACE program costs 83,70, and the I Teach program is 49,49. And so that particular, those two costs are spread out over the course of three years. And so that money that we have, that 83,19 is what is used to pay for that, those two programs plus their certifications.
Just a quick thing, could you just remind us, second, with the CAT, we have a new member here today, just to make sure everybody?
So with the CAT program, what we are doing is we are seeking the paraprofessionals that have been working in the school district for the minimum of a year. They have to have 60 credit hours, essentially, if they're associate's degree, in good standing with that particular campus. And so they apply for teaching positions. It kind of feels backwards, but they apply for teaching positions. And then, you know, they've already shown that interest with me that they want to get into the CAT program. Once they are being seeked out by the principal, then we start talking about actually completing application process, that type of thing, through the CAT program. They go through the American College of Education. They complete their 30 hours to complete their bachelor's degree, so they earn their bachelor's degree. And then we send them over to I Teach, which is our partner. And they go through I Teach, and then they complete their certification and take any exams that they would need to take at that point to get certified. And so essentially, with that, the 83,19 that I was talking about there, that is used to pay back for their school, for their I Teach and first attempt on any certifications that they are to complete for being fully certified teachers. And so the next piece to that explanation actually is the accomplishments. And so the good thing is, we've actually been 100% staffed using this program for the last two years, so 23, 24, and 24, 25. This year, unfortunately, we did not make 100%, but we were short by one teacher. So I do still consider that a success there. We have had several that were Ricky Teacher of the Year nominees and winners for their campuses. We've also had several districts that have reached out, even this summer, still reaching out, inquiring about the model. Word of mouth is huge in the advertising piece in this. Lots of people have just, you know, staff members have reached out because they've heard about it. CAT teacher told somebody, that type of thing. And so we've gotten a lot of just that word-of-mouth advertisement. And then the big thing is that success in the classroom. Our students, as I mentioned, I mean, our teachers, I'm sorry, they are Teacher of the Years on their campuses, and so they are very successful in what they do. They are handpicked for the program, so they are definitely a successful group. And then the last piece, we just added this, we actually have a TIA-recognized teacher who was recognized last year, and then this year she's actually qualified as a master's designation. So again, that just shows to the success of the aides that were in the classroom that are now our teachers. And so the success rate, again, is to be determined in 2027. I think at that point, whenever we see our retention rates, then we'll know for sure if we're, you know, what the success rate looks like for our particular program, for the CAT program at that point. So are there any questions regarding the CAT program?
Members, any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item B, academics. Item B1, Temple High School, 2026-2027 Course Catalog Proposed Changes.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Board. You do, you do have a copy of the course catalog in front of you, the changes. So I just want to take a moment to give you a summary of some of the highlights tonight. So first, you will see some minor clarifications for counseling and dual credit. We've also added some language to clarify for the FAST program. And that, the FAST program covers students who qualify for tuition credit. And then Temple ISD covers tuition for all other students who are enrolled in qualifying courses for the first time. Then you'll notice under Advanced Academics, the addition of OnRamps Art and Entertainment Technologies. This would be a brand-new classroom where students have the opportunity to get credit through University of Texas at Austin. You may previously remember that we have OnRamps Precal, OnRamps Physics, and OnRamps Statistics. And so now we'd like to extend that opportunity with this particular course. It is related to CTE, and it will give students an opportunity to complete the AV pathway. Under Fine Arts?
Dr. Armstrong asked you a question.
Yes.
For that, for that particular UT OnRamps course, is that a dual credit? Or is that a credit earned in fine arts for college? Or is that a credit earned in technology?
It'll be a credit earned in CTE, and then they'll have the option to accept UT credit if they want to.
When you say CTE, like?
It will not be an elective credit.
Okay.
Okay. Under Fine Arts, you'll notice some minor corrections there. In addition, we're excited to announce two new courses. Wildcat Players, which is a theater course, and Wildcat Art. These two classes are designed for opportunities for special education students to be paired with general education students, who mentor and support them and build the skills needed to be successful in these classes. Next, we'll under, we'll move to CTE, where you'll see some updated prerequisites. That's all based on guidance from TEA. You will also see some course fee information. And so unfortunately, with the rising cost of everything, cosmetology supplies and products are not an exception to that. And so unfortunately, those costs have increased. And so we will increase the kit fee for students, but the students get to take the kit home with them when they're done with the course. And they'll just see a fee increase ranging from $10 to $30. The next course is Principles of Community Services. This is a course aligned in CTE for students in education and training pathway. You'll notice advanced floral design. And so again, CTE has, they have increased the requirements for students to complete a pathway and to earn CCMR credit in CTE. And so that's part of this as well. The next course is Independent Study and Technology Applications. We do have students who come to us with technology courses that we don't offer. And so if they come in partway through the year, we need a course to enroll them in so that they can continue that pathway and complete here at TISD. Exciting, we have grown computer science enough that we need a computer science, too. And so that program's expanding, and this will allow them to finish their pathway there. We have two courses that we need to complete the business pathway. The business pathway of three or more courses for four or more credits, which is part of the new pathway requirements from TEA as well. Those are Principles of Business Marketing and Finance and Practicum in Business Management. And then finally, which shows as a remove, a course state, as a remove, Business Information Management I, that title is actually changing. So the course isn't going away. It's being renamed as Foundations of Business Communication and Technologies. And that will align with our current TECS. So that is a summary of the proposed catalog changes. The link to the current catalog is on the website. Any questions?
Members, any questions? Thank you. Yeah, Dr. Oat has a question.
I just have one question, and it may be both you and Dr. Rogers. On the cosmetology piece, at 125, 150, 175, so if I'm a student, that takes that for three years, that means I'm paying the cost for each kit separately? Or is there an offsetting? In other words, I'm only paying the difference year to year? What does that look like? Are those three separate kits? Is that 600 bucks for me to take those courses all to get, you know, all three years? So the cost difference between each of those courses, I'm not paying, so in other words, if I took Intro to Cosmetology and it was $125, and then the Cosmetology one's 150, am I paying the 25 difference? For the whole kit again, or just the difference? Okay, so it is it, so I'm paying the whole fee then? Right. So theoretically, for three years, that could be close to, I don't know, 500, 550 bucks. The, do we have sponsorships that we leverage through the CTE Advisory Group? I bet there are some salons in town that would donate if we have students that were unable to, I guess that's my question. If I'm a student and I register and I say, hey, I'm unable to, how do we handle that?
I don't know that we have that right now. I will certainly check with Ms. Lott's speech, but I think that's a great idea, so we can certainly look into that.
And, okay, that's, yeah, I don't think we say no, so. Okay. Okay, all right. Well, if I can help with any of that, let me know.
Great.
But I didn't just mean personally, but just with people in the community.
I think you heard them all here tonight.
I'd be happy to do both, though, so, okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Questions, Board? Item two is Math 6 to 12 Adoption Timeline and Committee.
Yes, so we are currently, or we're about to, review math science, or math secondary resources. We have begun looking for a committee, and you have a list of the committee members in front of you. Our first meeting actually takes place next week, where we will start reviewing materials and looking at resources that are available. Our second committee meeting will be in November. And then in January, we'll have some publisher presentations and our third committee meeting. And then the committee will vote. So I hope to be back in March with results for you of what we've chosen and we feel like we'd like to bring forward. And then in April, we'll begin the fun of ordering and getting all of our resources here.
Any questions, members? Dr. Armstrong, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Have a good day.
Item C, Facility Operations. One, consideration and possible action with respect to resolution expression of official intent to reimburse certain expenditures of the Temple Independent School District. Mr. Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. Posey. During the budget development process this year, we moved several, or some capital improvement obligations into the future bond. However, several of those items actually needed immediate attention. At this point in time, some of that work has already been completed or partially completed, and payment has been made. Specifically, we've already replaced a sewer line, contracted to install an ADA ramp, and purchased some HVAC equipment. These expenditures and several other capital improvement projects have been accounted for as part of the bond. That was always the plan from the beginning. This reimbursement resolution that we bring to you tonight will allow us to reimburse the cost of those expenditures, those things we've already expended this year, out of future 2025 bond proceeds, up to $400,000. Although, as of today, we've only spent, well, it's actually a little less than $200,000 that we've actually expended at this point in time. Approval of this resolution merely allows the district to complete the work now, using the general fund, and then reimbursing the general fund eventually out of bond proceeds once the bonds are sold. Preparation of the resolution and all legal guidance and all of these issues has been provided by our bond counsel, McCall, Parkhurst, and Horton. Also add that this is something that is common for schools to do, and it is something that we have done in the past with previous bonds. So it's not uncommon at all to go ahead and get a head start on some things you need to do and spend that general operating money, but then request reimbursement from bond proceeds once that time comes. So do you all have any questions that I might could answer about those projects?
Any questions for Mr. Boyd? Mr. Boyd, I ask a good question. If it doesn't pass, what happens then?
The general operating fund will cover the cost of those.
Right.
Which they were in the general operating fund to begin with, when we moved them for the bond. These are issues that, are issues whether or not the bond passes or not.
It'd be a moot point, yeah.
They're issues we have to address. There are some projects that you can put off if a bond doesn't pass. These were ones that you can't.
Right.
And you have to deal with them one way or the other.
We have to go forward with this.
Absolutely. These were, these burdens we had to absolutely do, and we would have done out of the bond, or out of the budget anyway, had we not had a bond coming, so.
Okay, thank you. Members, any further questions? Does require approval? Motion by Ms. Suarez, they're second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Myers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you.
Item D is Finance, no items tonight. E, Student Services, no items. F, Board Committee Reports. One, Policy Committee Meeting Minutes from September 24, 2025. This meeting was canceled. The next committee meeting is Wednesday, October 29, 2025, at 4:30 PM. Item two, Facilities Committee Meeting Minutes, September 25, 2025. Mr. Gaines?
Thank you, Mr. Posey. The meeting was called to order at 4:31 PM. Dr. Oat and Dr. Rogers discussed the process of reviewing proposed library material for purchase. And Mr. Hoggleberg presented a resolution which outlines the requirements for Senate Bill 12. The committee announced to approve the recommendation. Mr. Boyd presented an estimate of timeline for bond projects and shared a video of the proposed cafeteria kitchen renovations at Temple High School. Mr. Wallen presented several of named individuals who have been nominated for recognition through the district alumni spotlight. Board members provide, will provide the feedback. Dr. Ward presented a leadership project. She is currently working on, through the Holdsworth Project. The meeting was adjourned at 5:34 PM. Our next meeting will be October 30 at 4:30 PM here at the CL.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gaines. With no further items on agenda tonight, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much for attending.